Meeting number forty-four, Thursday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty. Please stand with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Good morning. Look at all those smiling faces we have on the screen in front of us. There's little Anna right in front of me. Hi, Anna. How you doing? There's a little Fortunato on the left corner. Yes. Those Fortunatos are everywhere.
Hello.
We miss you. You're gonna have to sit on the other side of the room, Jim, so you can see. That's on the other chair.
Once we get a longer cord, we'll be invisible before they're done.
Unintentional.
Okay. Welcome. We're starting to see different people out here now, or?
Some aren't showing anything.
We'll adjust because you're standing. The camera needs to get down a little bit. We will adjust as you're standing. Oh, gotcha. What's it take? About twenty minutes for adjustment? After you sit down? I think you have to. All right, we'll go on to approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-three, Thursday, November twelfth, two thousand twenty, and approval of bills for payment.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Cattie?
Yes.
Yes. Journal entries.
Motion to approve journal entry number one.
Second.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Cattie?
Yes.
Yes. Agreements. Data.
Morning, commissioners. These agreements, first one for professional agreement with Barb Zorn to assist in project management for a project we have together real quick in our domestic court for e-filing. And this is for Carol's CARES funding. And my second item is also for domestic with Business Information Systems to provide some enhanced audio and microphone capabilities in the courtroom so they can properly social distance in there as well. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jake. Appreciate the job you guys did too, Jake. I know that it's been painstaking and travel and error getting all these things coordinated. You know, a couple of months, we'll all get our vaccination, nobody will use it again.
He's in this forever now, man.
I hear you. All right, EMA. Dennis, did you return from vacation?
Good morning, commissioners. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, this is an agreement with AT&amp;T for Vesta training, for administrator training in the amount of seventy-five hundred. It is non-gener.
All right. Engineers, Patrick.
Good morning, everybody. Letter D is an agreement with IBI Group, former ME companies, for Speed Zone studies in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars. This is non-gener. This is also paired with a federal highway grant administered through the County Engineers Association, and it's on various routes throughout the county.
Facilities purchasing.
Good morning, everyone. That was the result of the mechanical engineering study we had done. We're entering into an agreement with Propp Boiler Heating and Welding for issues that we had with domestic water system at the Justice Center. This is to tie in twelve ponds in the medical bay with twelve recirculating lines to provide hot water and to make sure that we're doing everything to sanitize with sufficient temperature to prevent any issues with washing hands and virus. This is a non-gener fund expenditure.
KJC.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is an agreement with Cadence Care Network to provide clinical supervision towards licensure in the estimated amount of one thousand nine hundred fifty dollars, non-gener.
Excellent. All right, motion to approve agreements.
Motion to approve agreements A through F.
Second. Call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Cattie?
Yes.
Yes. Change order sanitary, Bill.
Yes, good morning, commissioners. This is change order number one, an extra work order number one. This is for the ongoing emergency repair work that we are doing at the Meander wastewater treatment plant that's related to the storm sewers and the catch basins located at the treatment plant. During the process of preparing the property for blacktopping, we uncovered several issues with the stormwater system out there. In the process of doing this work, JS Bova has been going and repairing and replacing certain catch basins, doing work to remove piping that was installed and concreted in. We've uncovered many issues out there. The facility's been there approximately forty-five years, and over this period of time, there has been deterioration of the system. So through this process, we've been able to repair it, replace many items, bring it up to the standards that need to be brought up, and especially for maintaining the access to the plants of the many vehicles that use that facility on a regular basis. So the extra work order is to do essential work necessary for completing the project. The change order itself is for items related to the initial project work. And again, this is all going to allow for us to finally get to a point where we will be able to repave this treatment facility. It's approximately thirteen acres in total. There's a lot of roadways, there's a network of access in and out. There's different parts of the plant that needed to be upgraded to allow for the delivery of new processes that were involved at the treatment plant. And again, by doing this work, we're bringing this plan up to the standards that need to be met today. So appreciate your consideration of this.
Thanks, Bill. Motion to approve change orders.
Motion to approve change orders three A.
Second. Call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Resolution.
Motion to approve resolutions, number one additions.
Second. Call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Commissioner Tom Cattie?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions. Commissioners, OMB.
Commissioners, this is a resolution to approve additional agreements and expenditures with the following agencies to assist with the COVID-nineteen public health and funded by CARES Act in the following amounts. Medvac, we're adding an additional five hundred thousand. And the Direction Home of Eastern Ohio will bring additional hundred thousand. Medvac is to increase the amount that we're assisting small businesses. And Direction Home will assist some of the things within their own agency, but also with some of the nursing homes and supplies and things that we need right now. The Mahoning County Departments, we took those amounts from the Mahoning County Departments that didn't get allocated otherwise. We've had to allocate the, all the funds, and right now, we do have everything allocated or in encumbrances. And so we'll be fine going into November twentieth, where we have to have everything taken care of. Anything that's left over tomorrow would end up in a blanket or something like that if necessary.
Will we resolve the quarter issue that was going on?
We, Colleen, has been going back and forth with them with revised estimates and stuff. And if so, then I can have some work and we adjust to that.
So it can be in and encumbered in the time?
Part of it, part of it, part of it is, part of it, they went back because they needed to adjust the amount because the estimate was higher than what they thought it should be per guard to death. So they're going back, but we should still be able to pull that in after if I have to reallocate something. One of the things is some of the monies that we have out to the agencies like Medvac, Catholic Charities and stuff, we give them a deadline. If they don't have those things spent by a certain deadline, then those funds will come back to the county and then we'll reallocate those dollars.
What about the areas outside of Mahoning County, I mean, outside of our government right here? Is it like the townships and stuff? Does that go back to the auditor? Do they don't use it?
If they have not, if they don't have it allocated or put into a compensation line, then it has to go back. Those funds can go back to our Mahoning County auditor, and then they get redistributed. They can only be redistributed to agencies who did not return funds.
So that would be?
The county, the county, right now, I believe, is twenty-five percent of the redistribution, and then the rest can go to the other areas. Okay. Item B is a resolution to amend Resolution twenty-ten zero-zero-three with Catholic Charities. That's for homeowner relief to specific additional uses for the funding at no change in the amount. Just to give them a little bit more flexibility. Some of the people that were coming in with mortgage and rent had other needs like food, things like that. So that's allow them to actually meet some of those needs when the people come in, so.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, facilities purchasing.
This is an ongoing commitment of our commissioners to make sure that additional cleaning, sanitizing with the courthouse, administration, building is done. It's a moral obligation for payment.
Thanks, Jake. Motion to approve resolutions.
Motion to approve resolutions A through C.
Second. Call.
Commissioner Emilio Guedes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We have to be fast today because we have like six million meetings that Audrey scheduled for us, so. All in one day. All good.
It's all good.
All right, good at your order. Anyone on the screen, lecturers or department heads, that would like to say something, ask something?
Anna, will you want to give the commissioners an update as far as the CARES Act funding and other funding we have? I mute your mic. Okay.
As far as the update, for our community organizations that we've assisted, we have been able to obligate all the funds primarily for group service, technologies, small business relief. Just an interesting note on the Small Business Relief Fund. That total amount for being released to small businesses, I mean, the commissioners have dedicated three point two five million dollars through that contract with Medvac to assist small businesses in our area. Did you have any specific questions? I don't, you know, it's just so cool.
You know, Anna, how is the Medvac? Are the people in Mahoning County using that program that we put in place?
Yes, absolutely, it's being used as recent as last week. While we were determining to make sure that we had all of our funds obligated, and we asked Medvac if they felt they had a need for the additional five hundred thousand that was on the meeting today. They responded with a resounding yes, so that is one of our projects that has been very successful throughout the county and meeting that week.
Anna, has the whole amount been encumbered on the three point two, or are they still processing new applications currently?
I believe that they are taking. I did get a call for this morning for a report, but I do believe that they still have some with the additional funds. It leaves them somewhere to take additional application.
Excellent, thank you.
I want to say too, we have taken the level as far as the size of the business. We've taken it up to two million dollars so that we would allow more businesses in. We started at, what, a million two fifty? We went up to one point five, and now we're at two million. So for all those businesses who may have wanted to apply before, but they didn't meet that criteria, let them know that basically we've increased that so now they would qualify, and so they still should reapply.
Excellent. Thank you, Anna. Anyone else? Pat? Bill? Anyone on the call that would like to? I see Justin Dennis on the call. Justin, you're not saying anything. Patrick, anything you'd like to add?
I'm trying to unmute myself. Does Patrick have anything to add? Otherwise, I don't see Mr. Teague or Mr. Kravik on the call, so are they around?
Not yet, no.
I'll withhold my questions for now.
Okay. All right, seeing no one else, is there anyone online that would like to ask a question? That is just a participant, visitor?
Dennis?
Any question?
Can you unmute your mic? You want to give the commissioners an update on the pushout you did for the drop from the state?
Sure. We received some additional PPE drops over the last two weeks. And last week, I pushed out to all the long-term care facilities and quite a few first responder agencies, some masks, N ninety-fives and gloves. And the state is pushing out gallons. They've already pushed out one push, and I have another push coming next week. So I will be dividing up again and making another push out of gallons to the long-term care facilities and first responders.
Dennis, what kind of numbers did you get from the state with the PPE drop?
Boy, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I had twenty-five pallets last week that ended up having to be broken down between disposable masks, N ninety-fives and gloves. So it was quite a large amount of N ninety-fives that went out to facilities and the other items. Not quite as many gloves as would have liked, but that is what we received.
Dennis, and the assistance for pushing that out came from, for breaking down?
The assistance to divide that up, I coordinated with the Sheriff's Department and utilized day report deputies and day report personnel to assist with dividing up the allotment for each facility. And then I myself coordinated with each of the facilities to come pick it up.
Dennis, are you, have you put the team together again to identify the additional needs that are going to be taken, or the additional responsibilities are going to be taken as we move forward?
Not at the moment, still continuing to monitor. If it continues, then we will, we'll do a phased opening if we need to, a partial activation, and bring in as needed. At the moment, it was just a logistical component of it with receiving this PPE, dividing it out, and distributing it out.
Can I have a question?
Sure.
Does this, Dennis, did the state give you any direction on when you should prepare to be ready for the next wave of which we're in right now?
I'm not sure I'm following the question. The PPE I received, I did not hold on to any of it. It one hundred percent got divided up and pushed out to the facilities that would need it. So not sitting on it. We do have a small patch that we are sitting on as a backup. But everything that we have received from the state over the last two weeks and the coming week will get divided up and pushed out.
All right, thanks, Dennis. Anyone else on that would like to comment or ask a question? Okay, seeing none? We will wrap it up with Carol. Well, as usual, I will give you my five minutes of the same information that I give every week. And that would be to pay attention to what the governor said yesterday. Wear your masks, self-distance. If you do not have to go anywhere other than the grocery store, or work, or the drugstore, please stay home. Be safe. It's better safe than sorry. This is not, you know, we're in a second wave, it's up, accounts are up, Mahoning County's in red. We need to be careful. We really need to watch what we do for the holidays. And if you're not sure how you feel, there's a lot of places that are giving the testing. Go get a test. Find out and relieve your mind of what you feel you are. It's very important for you to stay safe, your family members, and your workers. I want to thank everybody that worked on the CARES Act, Audrey, Anna, and everyone else in the county. They did an excellent job. Jimmy trying to keep us safe with Pete and Zach, that's important. It's just, it's just a scary time. It seems like a fiction story when you think about what we're going through. So please, I'm begging everybody to be safe, even at work. Wear your mask, stay in your own office, please. This is not a joke. And if you think you could go out and party down and come home and think it's not going to affect you, do not think that. Think twice about that. So anyway, that's my two cents. Jay, thanks for all of this new technology. We're happy to have it. We're probably using it for the next year, I'm sure, if we don't get a vaccine. So take care of yourself, and we'll see you next week. Thank you, David. Have fun.
Jake, I'd like to thank you and commend you for this war room setup that we have here with technology. It looks like NORAD. If anybody had a chance to come see just how nice our IT department has put this up to help with social distance, as Carol has said. Let's not forget our frontline workers, our nurses, our safety services for going through this for the last eight months. I know your patients can be tested with this, but you know, what I always try to say is just take personal responsibility. I don't think any of us have to be told what to do. I think that we know. It's been saturated in the media. Keep your distance, wear a mask. If you have symptoms, get checked. And I think we've all lived with this, and hopefully, this thing will dissipate in a few months, I hope. But with the testing coming out, the vaccines, there is hope for people. And I think that's what we need this time of year. We have Thanksgiving coming up. Don't forget those who may not have a meal on the table. Rescue Mission, there's a lot of places that you could donate some funds to help people, not only with this virus, but also people who don't have food. I want to commend Audrey and her staff for taking care of the CARES Act money and getting that out to the communities that not only help businesses, but those who cannot help themselves, who need a meal. And it's a tough time. And I believe we've helped people with rent, with mortgage assistance, and very happy they were able to do that. So Audrey did a formidable job, Jimmy, Nancy, everybody on board, the entire county, for helping us deal with this. So happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you. Definitely some different times for the holidays, starting, so everybody should have a beautiful decorations up, you know, because you have more time to stay at home and social distance. You know, it's, believe me, my wife has put, for two weeks, we've had all the Christmas decorations up. I tell her, you're not allowed to put Christmas up until Thanksgiving is over. She pays no attention. And so I would also remind everybody that we have a program or a promotion coming out that is trying to remind everybody to mask up Mahoning, you know, mask up Mahoning County. Governor DeWine was here yesterday at the Youngstown Airport. And he came in, and he is flying from different airports to different airports, just having press conferences to remind everybody that we need to make sure that we're paying attention, that we're social distancing, we're wearing our masks. On the calls we had with Lieutenant Governor Houston, as well as Governor DeWine this week, of which we probably had three of. And just reminding everybody of the importance of this and the skyrocketing numbers that are going up across the nation. So we need to step back, reevaluate what we're doing, how we're doing it, making sure that we're following the guidelines, we're abiding by the rules. They told us on Monday that they don't want to shut down, they want to slow down. And that's what they've promoted, and that's what they've presented as an option for the next three weeks to make sure that we slow down during the holidays, that we don't social, that we don't gather, you know, even within our own families. You know, don't go out of your immediate family circle that you're used to, accustomed to, and you have, you know, a belief, you know what they're doing and how they're handling the COVID situation. So please, it's, one thing that you can't stress enough is that the numbers are going up in the hospitals, the numbers are going up in the communities, but the number of healthcare workers available is going down because they get sick too. We don't have an abundance of healthcare workers. There's not extra doctors and nurses and healthcare workers that you can pull in to pick up the void. They're as vulnerable as the rest of us, you know, and in some situations, more so, even though they're probably take more precautions. So please, you know, if not for yourself, for everyone else around you, make sure that you, you know, follow the rules, the guidelines, and try to help others. There's so many people still in need, whether it be food, assistance. The numbers are only going to get worse because right now, we have such a dysfunctional federal government that nothing is coming down. You know, the CARES Act, I believe it was called from the House, that was put out in mid-June. It's never been voted on by the Senate. The Senate and the House can't coordinate a new bill coming out. You know, nothing is done on behalf of the American, of the American public, you know. So right now, it's a sad state of affairs for the whole country, really, and, you know, because of dysfunction of the federal government. And, you know, hopefully, we're going to get something to move up square, you know, off-center, and to be able to help people with their needs. More businesses are closing, more people are getting sick. You know, we can only pray that Pfizer, the other companies, plan to push out the vaccination is going to be successful. So I'll get out my soapbox, but one other thing. She's following me now, isn't she? I got a frog in my throat. See, he finally got it, don't we think? No, I had it. I had it, so I know. Last and definitely not least, tomorrow is my wife's birthday. And I have to, I have to say that we've been married twenty-seven years. She was born, I'm not going to say her age, but she was born in nineteen sixty. So, so that six, that six-oh word, or that six-oh number is like twofold. You know, nineteen sixty, twenty-twenty, you know, so. So, you know, I told her that, I told her that, you know, she definitely does not, definitely does not look her age, and it's because that I keep her so young.
And you're a year younger than Jenny.
I keep her so young, and I'm, yeah, she's a cougar. I'm young, I'm the young guy, I like that. It's not true, but I like it. So I have to say happy birthday to my wife, Jenny.
Happy birthday, Jenny.
And I'll get on the twenty-first, which is Saturday. The Veterans Food Drive, Food Giveaway at the Campfield Fairgrounds, part of the CARES Act. Dollars that have come out from the county. Is it from ten to two? Yeah, ten to two at the Campfield Fairgrounds. The Veteran Services on behalf of the county does an amazing job, and they have a great organization. Susan does a great job with the veterans, and Leo, Brian, and all the other people on the board for the Veteran Services. You know, they couldn't be better representatives for our county, so.
And they offer giving away turkeys?
They're giving away turkeys, is what they're giving. They have, they have ten to fifteen pounds, like medium size for families that are, you know, that have a need. So I'm not sure if they're doing anything different or just the turkeys.
I know, I think they don't go.
They have a box of food plus?
So 10 to 2, Campfield Fairgrounds, there'll be a very organized drive up, and I think you'll drive through one of the buildings, be distributed, and be able to move through, so. Thank you to everyone that worked so hard, you know, to make sure that all of this, all these dollars, and God bless Audrey and her staff and everyone that works at the county and the job that they've done. You know, obviously Nancy and Jimmy and everyone that have done such a great job on behalf of the residents of Mahoney County, that we're very lucky and fortunate to have the great people working here that we do.
They keep us in line.
They do. So with that said, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Next meeting?
Next meeting has been canceled for lack of interest.
All right, do you want to say?
Tuesday, November 24, 2020, 10:00 AM, same place, same time, same bat station.
Second.
Call.
Commissioner, the video again?
Yes. Yes.
Me confusing you, Nancy, as usual.